You have another obligation. I have three items. I'll run through those and then Dr. Putnam has three and then obviously if there are other questions or concerns. The second sheet in the booklet, we told you all that we would bring this to you for your input. I met with my collaborative leadership team. That's basically the folks that I supervise in the central office and we went through the new policies that are in place now. Been in place for a couple of years and everything we're required to report. And so we have the policy number, the name of the policy and how we think it should be reported. So if you want to adjust any of these, just let us know. There are just a few on the back. First of all, school safety. That's the, we do that during a board meeting. That's the update on the plans. And of course, you all can come and look at those plans. The second one is harassment and bullying. We report that. Any acts that occur to the state board. And then we also do an annual public notice. Mr. Francis, Chairman Francis, I told him you would be slipping in. There you are, right on cue. We also do an annual public notice online at the beginning of the year to let people know about those policies. The third one is administration and policy absence. That's basically when we have a situation and we don't have a policy for it. That's very rare with our new school board association policies. But when we have those, we'll just simply come to you in the committee session or work session or a board meeting and bring up that particular topic. You'll, you'll remember, we've actually written a few regulations in the last year and a half for situations like that where we didn't really have it spelled out and we put some stuff together. I remember one was a uniform matter, athletic uniforms, and then the other was related to school clubs and literature. So when those things come up, we'll just bring them to you and talk to you and then bring you the regs or the policy. Thirty-one forty is evaluation of instructional programs. We'd send out a press release. We did that actually earlier this week and then tonight Mrs. Barker's going to talk to you about performance. That's something we do in a regular board meeting. Title one program, comparability of services. That's something that the title one director brings actually in a board meeting. Belinda has done that the last couple of years. So that's where we do that. Concussion and head injury. We will do that in the future with the annual school health advisory council report. They do a report every year. We have not formally done the concussion and head injury information, but we will add that information to that annual public report in a board meeting. Random drug testing for students. You know, we do that in a regular board meeting. We'll continue to do that. And when we get finished, if there are any of these you want to change or talk about, we'll be glad to do that. Parent organizations. You know that you approve the parent advisory committee meeting members. I think that will be in October. I noticed Brooke was collecting our names for those and I shared that information with principals at the last meeting. Automated external defibrillators. That's part of the crisis plan report in the crisis planning. Participation in research projects. This is one that we have not done in the past, but we will start doing as per the new policy. The process there for Dr. Garrett and for myself, we have lots of university students getting master's degree or doctoral degrees. They ask to do research. I have actually one pending right now. What we do is we get their approval to do their project from the university. It's called IRB, Institutional Research Board at the university. Once we get that, that means the university's good with it. We read it. And when we approve those, because there will be some approved along the way, we will come and tell you that either, either in a work session or a board session so that you will, you will know about those. Use of student transportation services. When we have special use issues, cars versus buses versus other things like that and changes, we discuss those with you in board meetings or work sessions. Disposal of property, you're very familiar with that. Buildings and grounds just addressed some of that. We've done that for quite some time where we disclose that and, and talk about it in buildings and grounds and then eventually a board meeting. Recruitment and selection of personnel. That is a report that goes to the state board, basically of who we've hired and who we got. And there are a couple of state reports that we issue every year on turnover rate and people who've left us and who we've hired. And I think that report is actually scheduled for October, the turnover rate report. Going to look for Mr. Heinz. Anyway, I talked to him about that earlier today. Lysenger. We have to report all that to the state board. And you know, we can't pay them with state funds unless they have the right licensure. So we do that HR reporting to the state board. Staff involvement in decision making. We do this in board meetings and committee meetings and work sessions. Sometimes when we're debating whether or not to do something, we'll say things like, well, when we had our long range planning meeting, they were really interested in this. Or when we looked at the advanced debt survey, they were interested in this. Or when we met with the, the roundtable groups, this, they were interested in this. So we try to tell you those things when they come up in board meetings or committee meetings or work sessions. Grievance procedures for employees. This is also a relatively new one where we need to address the whole board. And I've talked to Dean Shatley about that. And we think the appropriate process is to tell you when it is referred to you. If we tell you in advance, we could be accused of biasing the board panel or producing bias in the board panel. Or if it is resolved before it gets to the board to bring you a report. And I think I've hinted to a couple of you that I've got one of those pending and I've been working on it. So if it's resolved, we'll bring you that information. And if it's referred to you, we'll certainly bring you that information. Student staff relations. That's a survey report information that goes to the state board. Personnel information goes to the state board. In particular, if there are things that might endanger their licensure, if they violated some law, then we report that to the state board. Reduction force. Unfortunately, we've been through some of that over the last few years. That's an open board meeting discussion. Classified personnel reduction. We've also had to do some of that with teacher assistants and other positions. We do that in a public board meeting. Gifts and bequests. This is a new one. Okay? So we will begin doing this. What the policy says is that we need to talk to you about how we're going to sustain any gift or request more than $5,000. Okay? How we give you ideas about sustaining whatever we're going to spend that on. We get lots of gifts and bequests because we have very generous businesses and church groups and other groups, but they're typically in the range of a few hundred dollars. But if we get one over 5,000, we'll come and say, here's what we're going to use it for. And here's how we plan to sustain it. This does not include gifts to the foundation. Of course, they do an annual report too. Penalties, fines and forfeitures. We talked about all that all the time. Those fines and forfeiture funds in finance committee, sometimes in closed session if there's a legal matter associated with it. And if it's something that needs to be voted on, we do it in the boards, in the board meeting. The federal grant administration, we come to you all the time with here's the title four, here's the title two, here's these reports. We bring those to you for approval in a board meeting. Limited claim settlement. That's again, if we have some kind of legal thing, we talk to you first of all in closed session and then in open session when appropriate. On the back, site selection. You all are very familiar that we talk about that in buildings and grounds and work sessions and board meetings. Same thing with facility design. A lot of this stuff, I get the opinion that other districts aren't doing it and we're fortunate that we're already doing a lot of this stuff. Building design. We just had a discussion in buildings and grounds about some of that. We always bring that to you in a committee or and/or a board meeting, whichever is appropriate. Selection and use of architects and engineers. That sounds familiar, buildings and grounds. So we bring that kind of information to you so you can talk about it. I know you just had that discussion a few minutes ago. Bidding for construction work. Again, something we talk about very often in buildings and grounds. Supervision of construction contracts. We do that too. Are we going to supervise? Are we going to hire, hire someone or pay someone to do that? And then pest management. Basically, when we're, when we spray, if we, we have to give a certain amount of notice. We have that in board policy. And then we try to communicate if we have an unusual situation. That's another one that we need to up our game on. I think probably 90% of these we've done for a long time. There are a few like the grievance procedures and a couple others, the bequest that we'll need to add. So any questions about those? Just trying to again, stay open and transparent and talk to you about how that information should come to you. Any questions about that one? Okay. The next one in your packet is what you all have done as a board with Dr. Garrett and myself to provide support for employees, to make their work better, to encourage them to stay, to decrease turnover and make working conditions better. So going back to seventeen eighteen, we increased the teacher supplement by nearly a half million dollars. That was worked in full disclosure and credit to Dr. Garrett with the board. That work that she did, that was paid right after she retired. But we've done that to keep our teachers here and we seem to be losing fewer to neighboring counties. Then in eighteen nineteen, we moved our admin four people to the assistant principal scale plus a half a percent. So we could hire central office people if they came out of an assistant principal's job or maybe from a very small school. We did the step increase for non-certified folks. Again, they, many of them had been frozen a decade or more. And so we did that increase. We did that work two springs ago. And so they began to see that step as this year started or they will when the state general assembly gets finished and we decide, do they get our step or the state step? And then we did a second step increase for years of experience in Haywood County, trying to make sure that that was accurate. And then we did a plan for transportation certification. Remember the plan that you approved. If they, if they had these certificates, they got this money and they had these certificates, they got this money. We've actually had one mechanic add two certificates. So the total in twenty eighteen nineteen was over 380,000. And then for the current year, we doubled the non-certified supplement. We think that will really help. And that was, you know, we had very rough economic times. They're not great now, but they're better. And so we were able to do that. We think that'll really help us for our folks who do not have a teaching license. We increased the principal and assistant principal responsibility stipend to be very much like Buncombe Counties. So if they leave us, they won't be going for the stipend. They might do it for the bigger overall supplement over there. And then we have worked on that bus driver insurance for bus drivers with 20 hours, but not 30. There are a couple of other little things we've done, but I wanted to show you this because I know if you're like me, you get asked all the time about more money and more money and more money. And I just wanted to, to publicly show you what all you have done. Going all the way back to Dr. Garrett and then the last year and a half or so with me. I think the, well, I know the full effect of these changes will not be felt until we get to March and people get that, that new supplement. So going forward, there will certainly be opportunities to increase how much people make or what their supplement is like. But to stay within the big budget picture and actually have an actualized budget, those will probably need to be smaller things than most of the things that you see on here. So that's just for your information. I think you're to be commended for that work because the board really has not changed much over that time period, if at all. And you've done very well with your people. So any questions about that?
Yes, sir.
You mean with the 20 and 30 hours? I don't think we have because it's so new. We have talked to our principals. I talked to them Wednesday. Dr. Putnam and I both talked to them at the principals meeting that we had last Wednesday about a couple openings that have occurred and that they need to go out of their way to make sure that where we can, without bumping anyone out of something that they like, that we get them into a bus driving job that's full time. It's busting something else. Or we get them into, if they can't get in one of those, then we get them in a job that at least has 20 hours. I don't think we have felt the full effect of that because this is a new policy and it's a new year and we're just in September. But I do think it'll make a difference for 10 or 12 of them anyway.
I drove out west in, in all those states in the Midwest. There's school buses at every busy intersection with big hiring signs on. I was, it just blew my mind.
We, I was actually interviewed by Education Week. And you may have seen it in the newspaper. They had a, I don't know if it's made the paper yet or not. They actually had a reporter come and ride on a bus with one of our, with our permission, with one of our drivers. Because Education Week had heard that we were trying lots of different things. And so I was able to tell them about all the things we were trying. But that was really interesting. That interview was about a week ago. So I don't know if that article has been put, put online by them or printed yet. But we certainly, again, with your leadership and help, we've tried a lot of things.
Certainly the crisis has not limited to Haywood County.
That's right. No, the crisis is nationwide. And Education Week was literally interviewing people all over the country who were trying different things. Any questions about that? That's just to, to, to put in writing for you all the things that you have done. Not that we can't do more, but I think we'll be, need to be mindful of future adjustments probably need to be maybe smaller than those. So we stay within our budget. Questions about that? My last item, I'll invite Dr. Putnam to just join in. We have met two times with representatives of the county. You know, when we did our presentation for the second time with the commissioners, Commissioner Inslee graciously said, you all get together and start talking. We have talked to them. Our finance folks on both sides have looked at numbers. There are some viable plans to do some financing because some debt is rolling off. We will continue to meet with them about that. But one of the things that we felt like it was important to do at this time, and I talked to Mr. Francis about this and he read the resolution in advance and sent it to Pat in advance. But tonight, we would like to ask you in the regular board meeting to approve this resolution. And it's basically a resolution for us to formalize the planning process. So I don't know if you want me to read it to you, but I'll certainly be reading, you can probably read it yourself. I'll certainly be reading it with your permission in the public session.
I like it. I feel like it's important to present the first step out. And this board, I would hope, would fully embrace the resolution that we've got before us today. It's, it's well-written and I think expresses what we need to be doing.
Well, in our meetings, we've talked about, well, will that property work? Will that property work? Will that property work? And we realize if we're going to literally go and talk to people about locations, the process needs to be formalized. Even though Chairman Inslee invited us to meet, we just wanted to start the formalization process. And they, I think if we will do this, we'll follow in suit rather quickly. And that's all that I have unless you have questions for me. I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam and he can talk about other items.
Okay. First item for me is I wanted to make you aware of something that's required by North Carolina General Statute 115C dash 105.51 of North Carolina. It provides that governing body of each public secondary school, grade six and higher shall operate an anonymous tip line that meets the standards and guidelines developed by the Department of Public Instruction by fall of 2019. Each middle and high school will have a team using the same criteria defined in our seven-step threat assessment. The superintendent, it basically states these tenets. The superintendent shall ensure each school forms a threat assessment team. Teams shall consist of a principal, mental health professional, SRO or law enforcement, and others as needed. So that's the very first sheet in your packet. Following that, I give kind of a timeline. You'll see these in your packet, the black slides. But basically, the name of this anonymous reporting system is See Something, Say Something. And this is the state's version of an anonymous tip line. It is free of cost to any public school who chooses to use it. It has been somewhat bumpy in the release of information. But so far, we're progressing through the process as we get information. We haven't met the first milestone, which is register three to five member admin team and school level teams. We have, it says, step two is select type of student training to be delivered, date training to be delivered, awareness materials needed, team training dates and save club appointees. That has not yet been done because those materials have not yet been released. School teams to attend an in-person SSARS training. We are registered to attend that in October. So all of our school level teams and then our district level team, which is the one comprised at the central office, we are all registered to go and attend that. And then schools receive student training materials. Again, I, we have yet to receive those materials, but it, just as soon as we get those, we will provide those to schools and help, help facilitate any training that's required of students. And they're saying schools train students by no later than November 4th. So that's just kind of the key milestones as we work our way through this process. But we also have received policy. We received the policy ahead of the training and ahead of the materials. Those tape, those policies were tabled. Mr. Rogers sits or chairs on that. And we put those aside until such a tip line was in place and functional. And so we're still anxiously awaiting for that to be functional. Just as soon as it is, we have some policies that we can implement and use in, in the way of anonymous tip line. Any questions on that? It's really just for your information. I didn't want it to get out ahead of you. We're beginning the training process for this and implementing the steps for the anonymous tip line.
I'm sure it's more, as you get more information, you'll tell us more when you get the materials and things of what the progress is and everything.
Yes. One, one thing I believe to be a challenge, typically, clubs have been initiated by students. They're student initiated, student operated, student owned, I guess you would say. And this, this new legislation would require us to form a club on behalf of the students. So that's, that's a little unique to us, but we'll do our best to make that happen.
Tuscola does have a good club in place. And I know a couple of the elementary schools have looked to model after that. So we're a little leery of that being mandated. You will be in this club, but.
How does it affect, how does the guidelines affect what Tuscola was already doing?
I don't think it'll impact it at all. We'll just say Tuscola has the, has the club you want us to have. It's already in place.
Any more questions on See Something, Say Something anonymous reporting? All right. Then moving to school capacity. As we discussed, the educational support center and, and plans that involve central elementary as a contingency plan for growth. I just wanted to share with you some occupancy information that we've gathered. And in gathering this information, I went to Hazelwood and Junealuska. And rather than providing a percentage that, but honestly, oftentimes people were like, what does that mean? What does 115% occupancy mean? What does 85% occupancy mean? I just went to the school and wrote down how each of the classes and rooms within that building were put in use and let the public decide whether that's overuse or underuse or at capacity or overcapacity. They can draw their own judgments from that. We'll start with Hazelwood Elementary. You'll see that there, currently, they have 374 students in 19 classrooms K through three. Based on a 22 per classroom max, they could hold 44 more students. They currently have 164 students in eight classrooms in fourth and fifth. That said, all of, all other rooms are occupied. Rooms 121 and 131 house three teachers simultaneously teaching title one and EC. Rooms 154 houses, room 154 houses two teachers simultaneously teaching exceptional children. Media Center houses an additional title one room, shared with the newsroom. And ESL or ELL, that should be, meets in the storage closet. So that just kind of gives you a quick snapshot of what it looks like at Hazelwood Elementary.
What about room one, the, up there at the top says room 134? Is this not, is it like being held in case numbers go higher and you need that for an extra classroom?
It could actually, if you look at the, how the other classrooms are being used, it's going to be put into use. If you take even one of the EC teachers that currently shares a room, or if you take one of the title one teachers that currently shares a room, it'll be, it could be put in use now. She had initially held that in anticipation of another classroom.
We, and Jill can speak to this because she does allotments too. But that room was held because we thought they would have another kindergarten. Even with the potential of a first or second adding a class because the class max have, have gone in the last three years from 20 three years from 24 in a room to 23 in a room to 22 in a room. So that room was essentially there because we thought the kindergarten numbers might come in, or if we had some influx into the school, first or second might need another room. We were very fortunate that that did not happen. They're actually, their enrollment at Hazelwood is actually down a little bit over a couple of years ago and we're thankful for that right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions on occupancy at Hazelwood? All right, flipping over, looking at Junealuska. Room 105 is used as the lead teacher office, conference room for parent meetings and serves as the testing room. Room 115 has three EC teachers using at the same time, serving 52 kids twice a day and four others once a day. Room 121 has three Title I teachers using at the same time. Room 136, this is a workroom, copier room being used for the school psychologist. Room 138, the media, they've actually created an AIG space for one AIG teacher. They've created a Title I space for two Title I teachers. This is within the media center. They've moved the teacher resources bookroom into the library and that's actually what they've used to divide up a portion of the library so that they have these Title I spaces. ELL and speech pathologists use tables in the media center to serve students. Room 141, this is a workroom, copier room being used for a Title I classroom. Electrical or a maintenance room upstairs to the mezzanine used for storage and meridian to service students. Meridian's our help, mental health provider. And then downstairs is used for storage. Hallway space out of, outside of room 112, tables are set up for Title I so that they have additional places to meet with kids. And then the hallway space outside of room 107, 108, tables set up for Title I there as well. Room beside 140, it's shared with the after-school director and meridian. And meridian again being mental health. So I think what this illustrates, and this is Trevor's take on it, just having visited the classrooms, you have several classrooms and a media center as well as mechanical rooms and other things being used outside their intended purpose. They are not ideal for students and, and using best practices with them. So as you look at or consider Central Elementary as a, an additional elementary school option, we are really, really close, if not there, to full occupancy in these locations. But again, I didn't want to draw that assumption. I wanted to put facts on a sheet and then if anybody had question or wanted to see what that looked like, I could take them and, and that's exactly the way it would be on the day I visited or, or when I took someone. So people can draw their own conclusions on that. Any questions about occupancy at those two schools?
The, I would just add, we did have a media request for this information. That's why we dug as deeply as we did Dr. Putnam dug. And what, I think the question was around, are you really going to need Central for an elementary school? And the answer is not today, or maybe not even next year, but certainly when Allen's Creek, Plot Creek, Bylow, and other things are built and people move in, we, we will need it. The question is, you know, when? I, I would think a few years out, but certainly at some point in time, we'll need it if the development on the western side of the county comes through as it, as it is projected to.
Well, if, if you look at this, and this is great information, but if you look at it, you got, if my math's right, you know, sitting there today, Hazelwood's at 92.5% and Junealuska's at 88. And that's only because we're using storage closets and electrical rooms. So we're overcrowded now.
Well, and that's the thing we wanted to convey. Our, our folks have gotten really good at making do within the, in, within the building. Do they all have a space? Sure. But it, it is, you make a great point. It's beyond what it was intended to be used as.
Yeah. And you have to ask yourself a question, is it conducive for children's learning? Three in a classroom? I don't know. We've got good teachers.
We really do have good teachers. We really do.
Do we have any way of, of course, I know it's early, maybe about spring next year, we'll know more about what kindergarten will look like and if, I guess my question is, if we needed it next year, will it be ready? Central, speaking of central.
I, I doubt it. We, it, it is.
Truthfully, I'm like Mr. Rogers. You know, we're pretty much capacity now using rooms not intended for classrooms.
Well, Hazelwood has been a little bigger. Junealuska has floated around 22 regular classrooms and they're bigger this year. We did get an influx of some students from the local brick and mortar charter and a good number of those went to Junealuska. I, I, I don't know how you would go in there and bring it back to code between now and next year. I do feel fairly confident that we'll be okay for a few years, just based upon normal birth rates and transitions. We will not be okay once those housing projects are up and occupied. We'll need the elementary space.
We're using some real fuzzy math because everything's not always going to be maxed out at 22 children per classroom. If you use real fuzzy math, a hundred student increase in those two schools, you're in mess.
Well, what happens, and then Jill can speak to this because she's done the allotments the last couple of years. What, what happens is when you hit, let's say you have three classrooms and you have 66 students, that's, that's, you can do that. When number 67 comes, you add a classroom, but your classes get a lot smaller and you can hold a lot more students. So that's the yo-yo that you go through. And we're talking K3 here. That's where the law applies to class size. So in some instances, you can take 20 more kids because you have, you know, four or five classrooms at a big school and they're all pretty small because you had to add that teacher just because you went one or two over. In other instances, you're pretty close to the line, to the 22 max average, and you have to add one. And there's no real good way to predict that.
Well, at the risk of getting shot in the face with a shotgun, would we, what would, would we have any redistricting options? Would free up?
Uh, well, one of the things that we've already done, and we do it with a grade level or two every year, we already deny out-of-district request if a grade level is full. Okay? So we've already done that. So we could do that for a whole school if we needed to. We would hope that we would not be forced to do that. But we do have times, and this, and we've done this for, for years, where someone wants to go to school X. I won't identify a school because it varies from year to year. And they want to be in second grade. And literally we say to them, it's full and we don't really want to add another teacher at that school, you know? Check with us next year, maybe the numbers will be better. Or if you were asking for, you know, kindergarten, you would have been fine. So we can, we can expand that to more grade levels at a school, any out-of-district stuff. And then I think what you just, what you have to do, and you can't predict the trends, Hazelwood is actually trending down, which is good from a facility standpoint. That won't hold when the construction occurs. And Hazelwood was very stable for several years. And then this year, we added some classrooms. And I, I really believe the, the bulk of that is the, the brick and mortar transfers from, from the local brick and mortar charter. So we hope that that will stabilize.
Any other questions or comment on school capacity? All right, and last but not least, I wanted to provide to you for your review, Kelly Educational Staffing. I want to point out right up front that for your consideration, you have in your packet a contract with some rates provided to us for staffing of custodial and child nutrition positions. This is not for teaching whatsoever. These are providing substitutes for when our custodians are out or when our child nutrition folks are out. What we, what we've observed or we, we think may be happening there is when a custodian's out, we're having a hard time filling those positions. Sometimes weeks, months at a time, we go without a custodial position. And what happens is if you're at a school that has four custodians and one's out, the other three inherit that load. You can't just stop cleaning or emptying the trash. It all has to get done. And so we end up overworking the three that are left there while we try to fill the position that we may or may not even have an applicant for when a custodian leaves. And so Kelly Staffing, if you look up there on this sheet, just so we're all on the same page, I'm holding it up, this one's in your pack. If you look at item number one there, it says types of assignments and pricing. They are able to provide to us a food service worker at $9 an hour. That is $2.85 cheaper than what it costs us to employ a child nutrition worker with the total compensation package, insurance and what have you. The custodian, they are able to, at a pay rate of $10, the, the bill rate to us is 1420. What we typically pay per hour for a custodian is 1794. So you got a school food service worker, if we used Kelly Staffing, the bill rate would be 1278. And we typically pay 1185. And then you got custodian at $10 an hour for a total bill rate of 1420. And we would pay, we typically pay 1794 for a custodian. The goal of this is not a savings, although at times it will be a savings. I'll give you a couple of examples of where it is a savings and where it is not. If one of our employees goes out on leave for two weeks, that will not be a savings. We will be paying the leave as is entitled to that employee and we will be paying Kelly Staffing to provide us a custodian while that employee's on leave. That is not a savings.
And if we're sending two weeks out on leave, we may not need to hire their services for two weeks. Rick?
Maybe.
Good if we had to, we may not have to.
We just have, and that, you know, that will be a threshold that needs to be discussed. Is it a week? Is it two weeks? Is it a month? You know, when do we enact Kelly Staffing? We just have to be mindful that you've got other custodians that the, the workload falls on. And we're just, we're really trying, number one, to create a, an employee group or a hire group that we can look at or consider. And number two, keep from overburdening our, our, our folks when they're out, when someone goes out.
What's their guarantee to staff?
They, they guarantee to staff 100%. This is an evergreen contract. The only time we're obligated to fulfill this agreement is when we owe them money. If they sent someone to fill a position and they worked the day, then we're obligated to pay them their rate or their bill rate for that position. Outside of that, we can terminate. If you'll look at this, this is the full contract and terms. And if you'll go to the back of the next to last page, under item 11, term or termination, I've highlighted it. It says essentially we can, they can cancel, we can cancel. So this is not an ongoing thing. We, we really just want to, to try this to see if number one, we can keep from overburdening our current staff. Number two, to see if we can't find some potential employees, we're actually getting to vet them right there on the job. And then number three, there, in some instances, there will be savings. Gave you the example of how we save mon, or we would not save money. How we would save money is if someone come in and resigned and said, I'm done. I'm not working for Haywood County Schools. And we took in a Kelly Staffing person. We worked them for 90 days, then we're actually paying, their bill rate is lower than what we can employ someone for. The difference being for a custodial position, their bill rate of 1420 versus 1794 is what we pay hourly. So we're saving some money there. But again, I, I don't think you.
Insurance and such. What?
Health insurance. Health insurance and total compensation package. Kelly does offer he, health benefits and, and those types of things that are attractive to folks who work for Kelly, but that's not a burden of the school system. That's something that Kelly Staffing offers. If at any time we are unhappy with a person they place, we're able to call them up and say, you know, I don't think this person's going to work out. I'm going to need you to send me somebody new. There, there's a couple of things that you as a board may have to be prepared for. Perception sometimes becomes reality. Oh, they're trying to take us over with Kelly Staffing. They're going to replace us all. They're outsourcing it. That is not the case. State and federal dollars are allotted for custodial and child nutrition positions. And those positions will continue to remain. We're simply trying to create a, a breeding ground, if you will, for new prospective employees that hopefully will help fill those state and federal allocated positions in the areas of custodial and child nutrition.
Substitutes. After 90 days, we're better off just hiring them if we like them.
And I'm, I'm sure, I'm trying to scan the thing of this, but I'm sure they do the background checks and.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
All that stuff we, we would need and.
Are we, I mean, are we still going to be looking at those background checks when they do send somebody? Or are we just trusting them on their word that they did it?
Well, we're, I imagine.
They don't do background checks.
Yeah. We'll obviously want to put eyes on, on that, but the beauty of Kelly Staffing is you can tell them what you want them to do before they're hired. You can tell them, we need them to have a nationwide background check. We can tell them that we'd like for them to be trained in, in what? In serve safe. We can tell them that we want them to be trained in serve safe. Allison's telling me for her child nutrition folks. So there's a benefit there and savings in the way that we're, we're not paying for those trainings. Kelly would get them ready for us, send them to us, we'll work them. And if we like them, in 90 days, we can keep them. We can actually hire them earlier than 90 days if we so choose, but there's a premium associated with that. So there might be a few. So there might be a few, uh, scenarios where we'd want to hire bu- before that ninety days. But it, uh, my best guess is it would be seldom because, you know, three months, you get to really know someone and if they're gonna be a good worker for you. Um, and no sense paying a penalty when you don't have to, you know, you, you go to term on ninety days.
So by your, go ahead. You're the lawyer. Go ahead.
What I say is twelve months.
Twelve months.
You, you got that contract?
Well, there's, I, I do have a contract.
Because you can't hire my-
There is a ninety-day limit on there.
But in the contract, it says twelve months. You can't have twelve months.
I think that you can hire them with no penalty after ninety days is, uh, where, where I was reading. But I think this is a good, uh, good plan. I don't think it should replace any full-time positions. But it's a good, uh, it should be a good place to get a free look type thing where you're paying just a little bit less what you're doing without the benefits. You're getting a free look at those people. And if they work out good, you hire them. And if you don't, you send them home. You send them back to Kelly.
I guess what I was asking is, is there, I don't see anything in the contract says, we will not keep anybody beyond that.
That's just one of the things I, I'm just saying that if you, if Trevor talked about the complete, uh, appearance-
For what?
Policy getting around our, our employees. I would like to see something that says we, that we're just, for a shorter period of time. Ninety days, whatever the board decides. We, we will do use Kelly's staffing for a period. But I think that if we start to, and I'm just, I'm trying to think of things in the form of law that says, hey, we're, we're really getting around some of the regulations of full-time employment. And someone says ninety days, we don't hire them, we keep them up for a hundred twenty, we keep them up for a hundred sixty, a hundred eighty. When do they become really full-time employees? School system. Uh, I'd like to see something that says, hey, we will do this for positions that we can't fill for a ninety-day period. That they, that be what the intent of the board is. I'm just trying to think of something that says, uh, hey, we're working people for a hundred eighty days. Are we getting, are we avoiding what the intent to have full-time employees and services? In other words, contracting out the public schools. Are we getting closer to a charter-type school contract?
I know there's-
May or may not be a problem.
Well, it's a problem with me. I don't like any con- contract work. And I, I, I see the reasoning behind this. If you've got somebody that's out for a week or two, you don't want your three or two or one custodian to do that other work and put more burden on them. I, I mean, I can, I can see that. I just never have like contract work. By no means when it comes to you can have employees, when you can have an employee there. So I think Mistress Matters may be hitting on, uh, something that we, you might need to do. Go ahead.
Was this gonna come to us tonight or is he gonna be reviewed by Kelly?
Um, well, we're, it's a work session. We're telling you about it. We can bring it forward. Um, I don't think it's on the regular agenda. I need to go back and look at that. We brought it for the work session. Uh, our intent is for substitutes and we can certainly look at limiting the term.
Right. And I just want to make one, one thing if you don't mind. I, I know, uh, Dr. Putnam hit it, the seventeen ninety-five that you're saying paid. That is health benefits, everything. The hourly rate that we're paying custodian is nowhere near seventeen ninety-five. It's just all the benefits.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that people understand that before somebody calls you and says, I'm not getting paid seventeen ninety-five.
Right.
But it's just-
Social Security, retirement, everything.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't like contract service period.
I think-
Well, and-
Go ahead.
Is eleven eighty-five insurance everything for, is that for insurance as well?
This, this is a, this is really intended for nothing. When we started negotiating with Kelly, it was intended to be a day-to-day set. And, and you would call and say, I've got somebody out for two weeks. I need them for two weeks. And they send them. And you only get billed if, when they send somebody. If we don't ever call and ask for one, we don't ever get a bill. So they bill you by the day, by the head of how many people they send. The ninety days is just a, a penalty clause. You can hire them at thirty days, you can hire them at five days, you can hire them as a hundred twenty days.
That's number two on here. Yes, that's, that's just a fee waived.
You're gonna get a fee if you do that.
Do it before the, yeah.
They want them to work for them. So they go out and recruit Matt Smathers. Be a custodian. They send them to us. If we hire him in thirty days, they haven't recruited their money they spent hiring, recruiting and training him. So they want a fee. As long as we wait the ninety days, they're not gonna charge us that fee, is what they're saying.
That's what they're saying there. And then I see under the non-solicitation, we can't solicit them or they can't solicit our employees during the term of the agreement or for a period of twelve months thereafter. So that's kind of like a real estate thing. You, if I list my property and I don't sell with that agent, they can still hold me if they sell it twelve months then. They could still come back and say, you sold within twelve months, we get their commission. I'm wondering about that non-solicitation part right there too. I mean, packaging after that, I don't. I think if, and if it is, it's, it's, it's probably a good thing for short-term. Let me just tell you a problem that I've dealt with in the last six months. On employees of, I made a name, employees of temporary facilities. Temporary facilities, uh, going to work at various plants around here. And they are told, well, for ninety, you're on a ninety-day warning period. You work for us for ninety days or six months. And then as they start getting to that six-month period, an issue arises. And they say, I've done everything y'all have asked me to do. I've been here on time. And they say, well, you're not meeting production or you're not doing something. So they're expecting full employment at the end of that ninety-day period, sixty-day period or whatever. And all of a sudden, gets down to the last week and they're terminated, say you're violating something that's there. And the response is, well, you know, I've done everything. I've, I've done it. Obviously, just because I'm, I'm getting ready to go on full-time employment now, I'm getting axed. I've dealt with a couple of situations recently. But that's just, I want y'all to be aware that that's out there, that there's that kind of talk that goes on. And there may be some liability if that was ever shown on some of the companies that are- I'm not saying this was Kelly, but you stretch the imagination. But there've been some complaints about that. So I think the, the, the idea is good. And I understand the need for these. I, I would like to see something in the agreement that says, hey, we will not hire anybody beyond ninety days or just something that says, hey, this is not, cannot develop into a full-time employment. I, 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 it probably should develop into a full-time, if it's a good person. But as long as it's, it's handled very carefully and that, hey, just understand this is a short-term employment issue. And I know it puts a burden on Jason, Trevor, and everybody else. Just want y'all to be aware of the issues.
A situation I could see coming up would be an FMLA-type situation where somebody's got twelve weeks, eight tw- eight weeks, twelve weeks. And they're coming back, but they fully intend to come back and they want their position waiting on them when they get back. So that might be a situation where that maybe be an outside limit on what you would do before you'd make a hiring decision. Because at that point, if that person comes back and there's no position open, then you don't, you're not obligated, I'm assuming. There's still a Kelly services.
But are there other districts using the Kelly services for this? Oh, over.
Yes. Uh, the question is, are there other districts using this? And Jason, you helped me out here, but, um, Jackson County's using him. Swain, Henderson, no.
This is Jackson and Swain right now.
Jackson and Swain. Thought there were three. Jackson and Swain's currently using Kelly's staff.
I've been doing it for custodians, child nutrition, and teacher subs. We, we don't want the teacher sub part, but, uh, we feel like this for the custodians and child nutrition. We're just going really long gaps of period, you know, thirty, sixty days where we can't even get an applicant. Let's hire someone. And it puts that burden on the two custodians that are left. And then time you get a one, a third one hired, one of the other two's quit because you've worked them to death, you know? And so we're just trying to avoid that situation, just get some short-term help. While, we would still advertise, we would still interview anyone who wanted to apply. Just because the Kelly person was filling in would not guarantee them any kind of job after ninety days or any day limit. Uh, they could apply like anyone else and be considered.
See, I like attempt service, like I say, for those situations. We gotta keep them at least ninety days or we're gonna be penalized, right?
No, we don't have to keep them ninety days. We just can't-
I mean, if that's what it says here.
If we are, if we are.
Hire them.
Well, you, you can hire them, but you get, you pay a premium.
So this is not just if they work sixty days, we're not penalized. We don't have to keep them full ninety days.
No.
Eventually, we can have somebody come in for a week. Two weeks or-
If, if they come in and work six hours, you pay them for six hours. You pay them for six hours and say, uh, don't send that one back. If they come in and work sixty days, and we go-
We're through with them, yeah.
Uh, don't send them back.
That's why I want to make sure there's no-
I just think it's something if we do it-
Even so many days.
It'd be very, you know, the board administration got to moderate that we're really not falling into a, a situation where contracting out services too much than what we-
Well, I think it would be, it doesn't have to be in the contract. It could be a directive from the board or something.
And watch-
To take care of our concerns about what we're gonna hear from the employees when we leave here.
They're gonna be upset thinking we're taking their jobs.
Yeah. So at some of the elementary schools, I mean, obviously they've got to clock in, or not clock in, but they've got to buzz in keys. I mean, or they don't, as soon as you hire them for one day, let's just say a week.
It, it may be something-
Are we giving them a key, getting them, giving them a way to get into the building just like that?
I, I think the chairman was right. It may be something the board just says, if we enter into this contract that anybody that's working more than two weeks or three weeks, whatever y'all decide, they're advised the board of that, that personnel, so y'all can just sort of monitor. Because y'all are gonna be the ones that it's gonna come to.
Well, we, uh, if I might, just to keep us on track, because we've got a lot of stuff yet to do. We brought this to you in the work session for this very reason, so we could share the idea on the substitutes. Let us get with, uh, Pat and work on it a little bit more and bring some more, uh, bring it back to you uh, at a later time, either in a work session or a, um, another way, once we've worked on it a little bit.
I got, I have one quick question. Um, have we looked at the number of hours that have been, you know, lost or that we're having to cover for from prior employee? Have we had, do we have any sense of, of how many hours we're looking that we need to be filled? And if so, if we use, if we have to pay for it, is that money coming out of local funds to cover this cost? And so do we have a sense of ballpark of what it's gonna cost?
We did try to look at that. It's hard to track. It's either being paid or not. But our current financial software will not track positions. So if position code two went out, we don't know it's position code two. It can't track that person, that second position or position code two at Hazelwood Elementary. It's just as an arbitrary example. It doesn't know they're gone. We're either paying it or we're not.
Is there a way to talk to the principals and get Ms. Francis to sort of look and see how many substitutes we've had to, to, you know, have in there? Or, you know, if people have called in sick or out on leave for whatever reason, sort of get some idea of how many weeks that is or days or?
You can get a rough estimate. I don't know if you can get a exact-
Rough. It'd be really rough.
Yeah, there was just saying it for me. It's, in concept, it's a-
Yeah.
Uh, but you can, you can end up-
Spending a lot of money.
Eliminating overtime that people want. It could have been, you know, it can just be-
It could start hurting some of our employees. And, I mean, it's helping, but it could hurt you as well.
Well, we're, we're talking about subs, you know? That's, that's what we're talking about. On, on a diff-
Eliminating overtime if somebody else was working and then-
You might. You really might. Um, the other thing too, on a side note, we do have, um, demos set up for, uh, HR and finance software. Um, the last one in October. So we hope to in November and December, uh, select a company and then we'll be put on a rotational basis with the state as to when we start with better software. That should be very helpful. But we have been working on that also this year to modernize our, uh, HR and financial software.
Very good.